Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. You called the December stated meeting for the Black Mountain Board of Aldermen and this by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our invocation this evening is given to us by Dr. Bill Henderson, the pastor of Black Mountain First Baptist Church. We appreciate you being here this evening and thank you for leading us in the invocation.
I got fired two weeks ago. They called the new pastor.
Oh, formally?
I have been there interim and they have called their new pastor two weeks ago.
Excellent.
He'll be here the second week in January. I hope you will extend the same invitation.
Absolutely, but for the public's information, that's your second round is ending. So Bill's done great service at First Baptist and we appreciate you very much. Bill does a great service to the community otherwise as well. So we appreciate you very much, Bill.
I, uh, we write out these prayers when we think about you all because we want to say something that's relevant. We don't want to just be hot dogs, but we want to say something that's relevant. And I had written by my wife and she said, "No, not this one," and "No, not this one," and so, you know, so. But I, you know, I thought about praying for all the community people, all the people that you all, whose responsibility you bear. And I spend the day at Swanau Valley Christian Ministry and if you could see the folks that come in there, and maybe one out of 10 might be a user of the system or they'd be, for the most part, you're looking at folks who have lost their jobs, who by just a, you know, a little twist of fate, they, you know, their illnesses and their job loss and their difficulties and relationships, you know, if come in, they just fall through the cracks, you know, it's just incredible. Rather than praying for all those folks, I just want to pray for you all tonight. So that's, that's what I want to do. So let me pray with you. Lord, we gather up in this place of responsibility and we come as just average folks, remembering that you made a habit of visiting ordinary folks, of pouring out your great spirit upon ordinary folks and calling out ordinary folks out of ordinary places and experiences and of creating ordinary folks with great freedom and the power to make real choices, all of it, so that we might do some extraordinary things. So we feel the weight of this responsibility, some exciting, some burdensome, but all of it benefiting us for the opportunities that we've been given to shape the life of this community, for her families, and even for our own family. So tonight we need your help, Lord. Help to be wise in our dealings, conscious of the wonder of folks like us, ordinary folks, who bear this burden of decision-making, but a great privilege given by our neighbors and our fellows. Help us tonight, Lord, to be worthy of their trust and worthy of the responsibilities that we hold and worthy of your blessings, oh Lord. And you have given us love at this season. So remind us now that we have been set free to live in this love and that tonight we can demonstrate this, the greatest power in all the world, by what we do tonight. So tonight we pray, oh Lord, that you would be with us and in us and work through us. In the name of all that is good, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Very much. Do be seated. I have a couple of, I don't have any announcements at this time. Josh, do you have any announcements that may be good for the public that you'd rather do now than later?
I'll do it later.
Okay, very good. I have my pleasure to offer two proclamations and the first one goes to Vice Mayor Maggie Tuttle. Maggie, I'm gonna, number one, I need to get this close to my face and then I need to get my glasses down so I can see a little bit better without being fogged up. But Maggie, we appreciate you very much and all that you've done, your service to the town and these words don't actually do, do, do me credit in trying to tell you how much I appreciated serving with you these past years and so, but nonetheless, this is the official proclamation for Vice Mayor Maggie Tuttle, December the 14th, 2020. Whereas the town of Black Mountain is always appreciative of those who serve for the betterment of the town and whereas Maggie Tuttle has dedicated nine years of service to the town of Black Mountain as an alderwoman and whereas Maggie Tuttle rendered during her term of office valuable services to the town of Black Mountain and the citizens thereof and whereas it is fitting that the town of Black Mountain shows its appreciation when one has rendered such valuable services. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed, proclaimed by the mayor and the Board of Aldermen of the town of Black Mountain, that Maggie Tuttle is hereby acknowledged as having been a good, loyal, and faithful public servant of the town of Black Mountain. That this proclamation expresses the deep appreciation on behalf of the citizens of the town of Black Mountain for the valuable service which has been provided the town. That this proclamation is hereby presented to Maggie Tuttle and a copy of same shall be placed within the records of the town of Black Mountain proclaimed this 14th day of December 2020, Larry B. Harris, Mayor. Thank you, Maggie, so much. Do you care to say anything?
Thank you, all you coworkers. It's been my privilege. As you know, the reason I came on board is to create a team atmosphere and I think it's happened and I'm so happy for that and I know the people coming behind me will carry on and believe me, it has been my honor and privilege. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Maggie, so much. Here you go. I'll ask Savannah maybe just to come and deliver this. Here you go. Here you go. Thank you, Savannah, very much. And to alderwoman Jennifer Willett, Jennifer, the 14th day of, Jennifer Willett, the 14th day of December 2020. Whereas the town of Black Mountain is always appreciative of those who serve for the betterment of the town and whereas Jennifer Willett has dedicated nine months of service to the town of Black Mountain as an alderwoman and whereas Jennifer Willett rendered during her term of office valuable services to the town of Black Mountain and the citizens thereof and whereas it is fitting that the town of Black Mountain shows its appreciation when one has rendered such valuable services. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the mayor and the Board of Aldermen of the town of Black Mountain, that Jennifer Willett is hereby acknowledged as having been a good, loyal, and faithful public servant of the town of Black Mountain. That this proclamation expresses the deep appreciation on behalf of the citizens of the town of Black Mountain for the valuable service which he, she has provided the town. That this proclamation is hereby presented to Jennifer Willett and a copy of same shall be placed within the records of the town of Black Mountain proclaimed this 14th day of December 2020, Larry B. Harris, Mayor. Jennifer, thank you. Do you care to say anything?
I would just like to say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve on this board. I have learned a lot and it has done my heart good to be a servant in this town that I grew up in and I just, I appreciate all the things I've learned from the more experienced board members and I just have really valued this and I would like to say also congratulations to our new board members and I wish you much success in the coming years.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you so much. Thank you, Savannah. And so, um, so what we have, Dr. Henderson will do a consent agenda and then we'll have the swearing in of our, of our, of our new members. And so just, you can, welcome to stay if you wish. We'll take a little, we'll have a little spot where we can leave. We do need to do citizen comments and I'm wondering if we have any citizen comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to ask, if you will, the board to add an, add an item to the consent agenda, which is item D, a call for public hearing to rezon a parcel known at pin number 061988-6353. This goes with item C, which is the annexation.
Right. And you want to repeat that one more time?
Sure. It's a call for public hearing, which would be consent agenda, item 5D, and it would be for calling for a public hearing for rezoning the parcel that is, is seeking annexation.
Very good. Thank you. Can I have a motion to amend the agenda to that extent?
Mr. Mayor, this is Ryan Stone. I would move to add item D as presented by the town manager to the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on that? If not, if you would, we need to call the rolls, so if you would, please start.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Jennifer Willett, aye.
Maggie Tuttle, aye.
Thank you very much. It's amended. Now, citizen comments?
I have one citizen comment. Did you get any more in? So we have one citizen comment and I'll read it. This is from former mayor Don Collins and it's dated December 14th, 2020. I would like to thank the fellow board members for your service to this town, especially Maggie Tuttle, whose strong leadership has turned this town about-face from bickering and embarrassing board meetings to one of mutual respect and something this town can be proud of. To the new board, congratulations. You have taken on the leadership of a town that is almost $3 million better off financially. The previous board worked diligently to plan prudently, which resulted in less debt and a larger fund balance. We have a great team of town employees, which are, which are some of the best in the state of North Carolina, led by Josh Harold. I know we all care about Black Mountain. Keep your tax rates low, spend wisely, and make your decisions for the group of the whole town, not the squeaky wheels. I wish you all the best. Thank you for your service. We count on you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
So you have the consent agenda in front of you and if you'll just move through that for, for us, Josh?
Sure. Item 4A, consent agenda, adoption of minutes. This is to adopt the minutes of November 5th, 2020. Agenda session, November 9th, 2020, regular session, and October 29th, 2020, Greenway update. Item 4B is a call for public hearing. This is for a text amendment to amend the Village of Cheshire master plan. This is to add some language that will dictate their design standards for, for that, for the Cheshire property. Item 4C, call for public hearing, is for the voluntary annexation of parcel 0619-88-6353. And item 4, excuse me, 4D is a call for public hearing to assign a zoning district to this parcel to come in for voluntary annexation, same parcel number 0619-88-6353.
Very good. So that's your consent agenda and we'd entertain, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Are there any questions, any discussion? Not all those in fact, oops, I'm sorry. If not, we'll have to do the roll call. Alderman Stone?
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Jennifer Willett, aye.
Maggie Tuttle, aye.
Great. Thank you so much. And so we will move into our, we have no unfinished business and we'll move into our organizational meeting and we are pleased to have the Honorable Stephen Cogburn, Clerk of Superior Court in Buncombe County. Thank you for being here this evening with us and with that, let's see if we can, those of us who aren't being sworn in, if we can allow for some room for, for those who are and let's see if we, we need to do. And a good place for you to stand, Judge Cogburn, might be just right here. How would that work? Would that work for you? And that gets everybody up here and makes a nice, nice thing? And am I okay if I stay in to moderate the meeting? It dawned on me that that might be a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me over here to do this. It's always an honor. I've enjoyed it every time you've had me, so.
Thank you for being here. It's an honor for us too. Yes, you've been here, you've been here.
Many times.
Many times, that's right.
Always enjoy it. The first person I have on my list, Your Honor, is Doug Hay.
Very good.
Mr. Hay, could you step up here? I would ask him to.
Now, do you have, would you, it's okay if his wife, family comes up?
You can bring any grandmother's family. Wonderful. Well, that's great. I have someone who's going to hold the Bible for you.
And you can, just, you might want to turn around. See there? That's good. And if you want to, however you want to move around the distance, whatever.
However you want to do it, okay?
Everybody good?
We're good. And just repeat after me. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I, Doug Hay, do solemnly and sincerely swear.
I, Doug Hay, do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the constitutional laws of the United States.
That I will support the constitutional laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established for the government thereof.
That are or may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
Maintain and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As alderman of the town of Black Mountain, North Carolina.
As alderman of the town of Black Mountain, North Carolina.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Next one on my list is Pam King. You want to hold this for us? Okay. And if you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I, Pam King.
I, Pam King.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the constitutional laws of the United States.
That I will support the constitutional laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are.
And the authorities which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As alderman of the town of Black Mountain, North Carolina.
As the alderman of the town of Black Mountain, North Carolina.
Congratulations. And finally, but certainly not these, Archie Patilla. Well, you'll just hold that in your left hand and raise your right hand, okay?
I'd be glad to hold it for you.
That would be wonderful.
Great. Thank you.
It's always nice to have somebody who's going to join in and make some little extra pressure on them. I, Archie Patilla.
I, Archie Patilla.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the constitutional laws of the United States.
That I will support the constitutional laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As alderman of the town of Black Mountain, North Carolina.
As alderman of the town of Black Mountain, North Carolina.
Congratulations, sir.
Okay, so we are, we are, are still in our organizational meeting and we are at the appointment of the vice mayor. And it has been the tradition, which this is absolutely at the board's discretion, that the high vote getter in the previous election is nominated and, for vice mayor, and that would be Alderman Stone. And so I'll leave that to the board, but it is up to the board and so I would entertain motions for vice mayor.
I'd like to nominate Alderman Stone for.
Very good. Got a, not, the motions made. Is there any motions made? And, and by the way, and I'll mention this, Archie, because just to make sure, Alderman Patilla, just to make sure that everyone understands, and the board can change this at any time too, but it is our practice under our rules of order, which any board can change if you want to, but we do not second motions. If a motion is made, the board takes it up. And that's been the practice as long as I've been on the board and I don't know, Ron.
That, yes, that's been, that was a recommendation by Fleming Bell 30 years ago.
Yep.
School of Government, that for small boards, you don't call for seconds. And this board as well. The obvious reason, I sit on other boards that have seconds and people will second a motion they're going to vote against just so it can get voted on.
Right. Right. Done that myself. Anyway, thank you. That sounds great. So we have a motion on the floor to nominate Alderman Stone for vice mayor. Is there any discussion or questions? And if not, I would let Alderman Stone cast the first vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh.
And you bet. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. And if you would like, we could, we could wait and we can do this any way you'd want to. We can do the swearing in at another meeting if you'd like that. Or we can do it, you know, do it tonight, whichever you prefer.
Sure, we can wait and do it at another meeting.
That's great. We'll just, we'll just do that.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. You bet. We'll do that. Again, my apologies. I wrote it down and then as we were in the other room talking and visiting with Judge Cogburn, we let him know, didn't we? Okay, so now we are on item D of our agenda, appointments of representatives and alternates to represent the town of Black Mountain on various board and commissions. You have in front of you a sheet that has been provided with the current, current boards and that we populate with appointments from the Board of Aldermen and, if I can manage the fog here, and let me just go through this quickly primarily for the public, but the first is the Black Mountain Center for the Arts currently. That member is our town manager, Josh Harold, and the alternate was alderwoman Maggie Tuttle. And the second is our appointee to the Black Mountain Swannanaw Chamber of Commerce Executive Board, and that is, the member is town manager Josh Harold and the alternate is Alderman Tim Raines. Land of Sky Regional Council Board of Directors, the member is, is me, Larry B. Harris, and the alternate was alderwoman Maggie Tuttle. The only thing I would mention to the board that I still serve on the executive committee at Land of Sky, I'm the past board chair, currently the board chair is, is Mayor Volk of Henderson, Mayor Volk, who's the mayor of Hendersonville. Land of Sky Regional Council's of four, county, region, Buncombe, Madison, Transylvania, and Henderson County, and carry on various functions, managing grant monies and providing various services to our region. The next is the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Transportation Board, member currently is Ryan Stone. I serve Larry B. Harris as the alternate and I was also appointed by the county commissioners to serve as the rural transit representative, which rotates among the four counties that the MPO covers, which is Madison, Buncombe, Henderson, and Haywood County, just a little bit different than the Land of Sky. And I would also note that I have been elected to serve as board chair at the French Broad River MPO, which is one-year term and, and I think they like for you to serve two consecutive years, so it's, it's not a two-year commitment, but they like to keep it that way, just to keep a little bit of continuity. But you have to, you run through the election again or appointment, I believe. So we also have at the MPO, the Technical Coordinating Committee. This is a function, this committee helps make, makes and gives direction as far as planning and all the myriad technical issues, transportation issues that flow through the MPO. And it's very much a staff level and populated group. Each municipality in our region appoints a board, a member to the TCC as they do to the French Broad River MPO. Currently, that's Jessica Trotman, our Director of Planning, and the alternate is Josh Harold, our town manager. The Metropolitan Sewer District is, is, the appointment has been held by Bob Watts for the, since 2018 and we can reappoint, we would reappoint a new member tonight. I believe, you're going to have to correct me on this, our, our habit has been, and it's not, this is, this board can change it, but our practice has been two terms and Bob would have served two?
That sounds right, but without looking at it, I don't want to say yes or no.
It's, but it's not set in stone. This board can do it. But I think that's a cycle that we've been following, but it's, it's not set in stone, but that can, that can be done. And, and so then you have the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium and Jessica Trotman at the, at our staff level is the member and the alternate is Vice Mayor Stone. And the Friends of the Flora, Fonta Flora State Trail, Inc., this is relatively new, but a, a very active group that is trying to get that Fonta Flora Trail connected here to Buncombe County and to create a broader network of, of greenways and trails here in the county and beyond. And I have been serving on that board since it came into being several months ago. And, and actually our town manager, I believe the bylaws allow you, allow the town manager to, to vote if the member isn't there. And so I do not serve any, I serve on the board of that and that is, I might encourage, it's something we all need to pay attention to, but I might encourage a new member there and I would, even though it's at the board's pleasure, like to, it'd be my preference and my request to continue service at the MPO and at Land of Sky while I'm still executive committee and of course, the chair, the chair-elect at the MPO. But this is, this is a good, active board and important work and a good place to, to plug in, so I would, I would encourage that. And of course, we have the vice mayor that. And of course, we have the vice mayor that we have, um, we have appointed tonight already, and will be sworn in, um, at, at a time that, um, that the vice mayor would like to choose. So that's what we have before us, and so the first that we'll pick up would be the, um, Black Mountain Center for the Arts, and so I'd entertain a nomination for the member to the Black Mountain Center of the Arts, and I would like to offer that Alderman Patilla was interested in that service, and would just offer that to the board for your consideration.
Mayor, I just have a question.
Yes.
Uh, I see that this, this paper says that these are the board appointments as of March of 2020. How long are these appointments typically for?
Um, it's a good question, and I believe we circle around every, every, every two years on them.
Two years, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think that sounds right, doesn't it? That sounds right to everyone?
Every election cycle.
Yeah, every election cycle, so we pick them up in two years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, sure. And some of these, um, some of these, um, boards are a little easier to pick up on. Some, it's helpful to have served a couple of years, and you kind of get into the groove because of just, you know, just because of the number of people involved and, and, and what, what they do, frankly, but that's, again, that's all at the board's discretion. So, uh, Black Mountain Center for the Arts, I'd entertain a nomination for the member.
Mr. Mayor, I'll nominate Archie Patilla to serve as a member of the Black Mountain Center for the Arts.
Very good, thank you so much, nomination. Um, any questions, comments? If not, then we'll vote, and we'll start with Vice Mayor Stone.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you, congratulations, Archie, thank you for, thank you for taking on that service. And we need, do we need an alternate? We do need an alternate there. And so I would just encourage the board, if you're interested in being that alternate, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Pam King as the alternate for the Center for the Arts Board.
Great, Pam, thank you for being willing to do that. Any questions or comments? If not, then we'll begin the voting.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you, thank you, Pam, for taking that on. Black Mountain Swannonaw Chamber of Commerce Executive Board, uh, primary member.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Doug Hay.
Very good, thank you, thank you for being willing to serve Alderman Hay, that's wonderful, thank you for that, being willing to do that. Is there any questions or comments? If not, we'll begin the voting.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you, that's great, thank you so much for being willing to do that. And we need an alternate member.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Tim Raines as the alternate.
Very good, is that good for you, Mr. Raines? That's great, we don't want to, we don't want to appoint you if you're not quite sure about it.
Yes, sir.
Get a nod over the mask there. Excuse me, I had my phones clicking here. If we would start the voting.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you so much, and we need a, an alternate to serve on the, nope, he is the alternate, forgive me. And so we're at Land of Sky Regional Council, and nominations for a member.
I would like to nominate Mayor Harris, Mayor Harris.
Thank you so much, Alderman Hay, appreciate that very much. Any questions or comments? If not...
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you, I appreciate that, um, board. And we need an alternate to Land of Sky Regional Council. It's by, it is by Zoom now, so it's not, you don't have to drive over to, you know, to...
Do Lisa. Do Lisa, that's your problem.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ryan Stone.
Thank you, Archie.
Very good, is that good for you?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, excellent, thank you, that's, happy, happy that you're willing to do that. Very good, start the voting.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Great, thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor Stone, that's great. Uh, now with French Broad River, um, MPO, um, nomination for a member.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate, uh, you as the primary member, if that's all right?
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that, being willing to do that, and if you would start the voting.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you so much, and now nomination for an alternate member to the French Broad River MPO. And I might add, as you can see from the list, that, that, uh, Alderman, Vice Mayor Stone's, um, kind nomination for me, he's suggesting perhaps that we switch places, but I think that's, of course, up to the board.
Ryan, would you like to serve as the... I, I would be happy to, but if, um, if anyone else is interested in service on that board, I'm, I'm happy to let somebody else do it.
I would nominate Ryan Stone.
Sounds good.
That sounds, that sounds good, thank you, thank you, thank you for the nomination, thank you.
All right, Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you, and now we're at the, um, French Broad River MPO Technical Coordinating Committee.
So am I correct that these are all, are generally staff members?
Generally speaking, that is how that, that works. But, you know, it's, can be, you know, for instance, Councilwoman Mayfield in Asheville served on it, and, um, Mayor Vehan is, he, I think right now he is not on it, I think he's on the prioritization committee that's appointed by the TCC, but there are other elected officials on it. And so, um, what we have now is our planning director and our, uh, town manager, um, but it's, if, if someone has the time to do it, these are fairly time-consuming meetings, and they're usually, um, they used to, I think I have it right, first Tuesday of the month, and, um, and, you know, if, if, if someone on the board, and right now, there again, by, you know, by Zoom, everything's virtual, which, you know, I, I can't speak to this, but I have a sense that some of these meetings will remain virtual, you know, it's a four, it's a four-county region, so, you know, so it's just sometimes, that's, that's really the more practical way to do it, that I think maybe after, um, hopefully we're done with our pandemic, that, that will perhaps change the way we do some business. So, can't speak to that, I don't know if that's for sure, but anyway, it is one that, that a staff member, I mean, a, a board member or elected official can certainly take on, um, if you, if you wish. And, and by the way, anybody, these are public meetings, so anybody can attend all of them, you know, it's, it's good. But currently, it is, um, our planning director, primary, and, and, uh, town manager's alternate, and they attend, you know, they, they're, they're present, so I'll leave it to you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Jessica Trotman.
Great, very good, thank you, any discussions, comments? If not, Alderman, Vice Mayor Stone?
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Great, thank you, and we need an alternate.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Josh Harold.
Very good, any questions, comments? If not...
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Very good, thank you. Metropolitan Sewer District Board of Directors, we need a nomination for the member.
Mr. Mayor, was Bob Watts willing to serve again, or could he serve again, or...
You know, if, if, we, we can, we can, um, delay that, delay the vote on this, if you'd like to, it's an important spot.
It is.
At the MSD, and it's an important spot, and we can delay the vote on that to make sure that we understand, um, I, I, I think he can, because it was simply by our practice that we rotated around, but if you, if, it's, this is at the board's pleasure, if you'd like, I think we could do this without any problem. Uh, Ron, you can correct me if not, but I think Bob would keep serving until he's, uh, has an appointment, I mean, somebody is appointed in his stead.
Yeah, that's right, any appointed board member serves until...
And so nothing's going to happen, if you want to take this up in Jan, in our January meeting and think it through, you could stay in touch with the town manager about it, and also circulate around if there's, this is a pretty responsible, uh, spot, uh, and, and Bob Watts does have a lot of experience, um, he's served, he's, he's served more, he's served three terms, maybe?
I think so, I think so.
And, and so he's certain, he has a lot of experience there, but he also has a lot of expertise on, atop, atop the experience at MSD, so he represents the town well at MSD. As a matter of fact, um, the, the board chair, uh, Mayor Vehan at Woodfin, uh, told me recently just how much he appreciated Bob's expertise and his service on the board. And so why don't we just make sure that we have our ducks in a row on that, and the board can think about it, we'll take it up in January, if that sounds okay to everybody.
Sounds good.
Okay, very good. And, uh, that would move us over then to the, um, Asheville Regional Housing Consortium, and nomination for a member.
Mr. Mayor, I would nominate Jessica Trotman.
Very good, thank you, any questions, comments? If not...
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Great, thank you so much, and we need an alternate, um, for the housing consortium.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ryan Stone, if he's willing to serve.
Uh, Tim, I, I thank you for your, your nomination, but I do know that Alderman Patilla had some interest in this position as well, uh, and if there are any other persons that have any interest in this particular board, I would, uh, certainly appreciate them just saying, saying that.
Very good, Tim, would you like to, would you like to, you can just simply withdraw that nomination, and if you...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll withdraw my nomination.
And if you wish...
Nominate Archie Patilla for that position.
That'd work, that sounds good to you, that's great, thank you, Archie, for being willing to do that, thank you, Alderman Stone, go ahead and start the voting.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Very good, and also, I might add, Alderman Patilla, that if you are interested in being the primary on that, that at our January meeting, we can, you know, we can, because I'm sure, uh, that Jessica would be, that would just be fine with her.
Okay.
You know, I think that would be fine, she has, you know, plenty on her plate doing the TCC work and so forth, and so we can, if we would, Josh and Savannah, let's just keep this on the, on the agenda, and if, if it's, if it works for Jessica, we will consider in January making that, making that change.
Sure.
So we, now we have the Friends of Fonta Flora Board, and we need nomination for a member.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Pam King.
Is that, Pam, good for you? Would you be willing to take on that service?
Yes, I will, thank you, Archie.
Great, thank you, that sounds good, we'll start the voting then.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Very good, thank you, and we need an alternate, and that could be, could be a staff person, if you prefer.
I wouldn't mind serving on this one.
Oh, great, wonderful, that's great, it's a good, it's a good group, very active, Bob Hunter, former state senator and former appellate court judge.
Appellate Court Judge.
Um, is, has taken this on, he lives down at Lake James, and has taken it on, and really working hard at it, and it's, it's an, you know, it's really, it's important for us, it'll be a great link, it's important for a lot of the other towns, too, in between Old Fort, Marion, and so forth, so it's great, thank you both for being willing to do that, it's a great group. So we need to vote, thank you, Doug, for taking that on, we'll start the voting.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Very good, thank you, I think we're done, and we'll pick those other two issues back up in January, and we have in front of us, we've already taken our recess, so we have in front of us the adoption of the schedule for the Board of Alderman Agendas, Alderman Agenda Workshop, and the regular session meetings for 2021, and, uh, we post these, that way it takes care of the, of the public posting for our meetings for the entire year, but if, uh, you know, circumstances create a situation where they need to be changed, that's the issue, it has to be posted again, so, you know, we try to keep these as best we can. So you have that in front of you, and I'd entertain a motion that we adopt it.
I'll move that we adopt the, um, proposed schedule of regular meetings for 2021.
Great, thank you, is there any questions or comments? If not, Vice Mayor Stone, if you'd start the voting.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Great, thank you, and we're at item F, filing of the 2020 Buncombe County Municipal Election Results. Josh.
So you have this in front of you in your packet, this is simply to adopt the filed election results from Buncombe County, um, that just lays out the number of votes for each candidate?
That we need to, we need to officially get those in our minutes.
Yes.
And that's what this is about, so congratulations to our new members, we'll enter the result, our three new members, and we'll, um, and if with, if we'll entertain a motion to enter those results in our minutes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we enter the 2020 election results in our minutes.
Very good, any questions or comments? If not, Vice Mayor Stone?
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you very much, we have item G, we have, uh, the opportunity to fill vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission, and also on the Planning Board, and we, on the Historic Preservation, which is our first, um, first item of business we'll pick up there, we have one vacancy to fill, the unexpired term ending June 30th, 2023. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I would, um, first like to thank everyone who applied, we had wonderful group of applicants, I think, for both of these boards, and, um, I'd love to see that. I'd like to nominate Matt Turner for the Historic Preservation thing.
Very good, any questions, comments? If not, Vice Mayor Stone?
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you, and we have a position on the Planning Board, a vacancy to fill the unexpired term ending June the 30th, 2021, and we have a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Kathy Phillips.
Very good, any questions, comments? If not...
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Raines, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Very good, thank you. Do we have any...
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a question of a process?
Uh-huh.
At some point, is that appropriate?
Sure.
I wanted to echo Doug's comments that we had great applicants, and I appreciate that, and I hope the ones that weren't, um, appointed tonight will seek it again, because we really were lucky to have so many good choices. And I also just wanted to ask a question about process, I know there's two approved processes for filling these kind of appointments, the North Carolina School of Government, and I just wondered if at some point in the future, at another board meeting, if we could consider both of those processes, to make sure that we're using the best one for Black Mountain.
Sure, sure, it could well be, you know, that, to me, that might be a great topic, and we might have, have some other things to add to it, um, because I think the board, uh, some new members of our board, um, express, and, and current members express some, uh, thought of cha, of, of changing the manner in which, you know, we, of our town charter, or at least considering that, and I would think that that might be very appropriate for, um, a workshop, just a special call meeting to address those, this, it, this, this topic, and also, uh, the topic of the, uh, town charter. Seems to me that would be good, of course, that's up to the board, but what I would suggest is, um, you know, that at our January meeting, to, for the board to have in mind what works best for everyone, for, um, you know, for a workshop, if it's first thing in the morning... For, you know, for a workshop, if it's first thing in the morning, if it's at 5:00. Just what works for everyone's schedule so that it's convenient. And I think since we're meeting virtually, as far as, you know, the public attending, it's probably six, one half dozen the other. But just keep that in mind and we'll, we can, we can discuss it in January if that's the board's pleasure.
Thank you.
Yeah, you betcha. Any citizen comments?
No, sir.
Very good. We'll move into the new business amendments to chapter 48 of the Code of Ordinances.
So what you have in your packet, chapter 8A, the amendments to chapter 48 of the Code of Ordinances. This is simply doing some cleanup. We did, I guess it's probably been a year now where we adopted a system development fee versus a impact fee. The reasons for that are, you know, came down from the state that we needed to do something different on how we charged fees. So it's a very scientific analysis now on how we charge those system development fees. Impact fees are no longer something that is allowed to be charged. And this is simply removing that language from our Code of Ordinances in chapter 48.
Good. Any questions for Josh on that? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve and adopt ordinance 0-20-14. Or is that O? Is that an O or a zero? O-20-14.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt ordinance O-20-14 as presented.
Very good. Any questions on that or comments, discussion? If not, if you'd start the voting, please.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Marins, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you. We have the tuition reimbursement policy. Josh?
So item 8B is your tuition reimbursement policy. I think the, the cover sheet calls it tuition assistance program policy, pretty much the same thing. Currently, what we have in place is really just a one-page worksheet that you fill out. There's really not a lot of criteria at all that is associated with it. What we wanted to do was put together a very small policy. I think it's about three pages. It just kind of goes down and, you know, states, well, you've got to receive a grade of B or higher to get reimbursed. You've got to put in your requests at X amount of time. And of course, this is all subject to Alderman approval as far as the line item in the budget on how much we put in that every year. This year, we had $5,000 in that line item. And folks are starting to take advantage of that a little more than they have in the past. So I think it's something good that we can provide for our employees if they're going to better themselves. And, and as I mentioned in the, excuse me, in the agenda meeting, there is some language in here that talks about salary adjustments. Any salary adjustments do come before this board for approval. So it's not something that is going to be happening outside of, of your knowledge. But I just wanted to point that, point that out to you so you would be aware of that. But all the information in here, there's going to be a lot of checks and balances where these, these courses have to be approved by department heads and myself to make sure they are in line with what we're, with what we're looking for.
Very good. Any questions for Josh? So if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the tuition assistance, assistance program policy. The detail's in your packet, but then just explain by Josh.
So moved.
Very good. That's motion by Alderman Patilla. And if there's not any, not any further discussion or comments, we'll start the voting.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Marins, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you. Item C, acceptance of water lines and easements associated with the Avotum Project and conveyance of interest in sewer lines and easements associated with the Avotum Project. Is this the town attorney?
That's on me. Mr. Mayor, this is, we'll clean up at the end of the construction of infrastructure that was started to serve the Avotum Plant that we may or may not see in the future. But those sewer lines and, and water lines went in under the town's name. That's just the way the grant was structured. And so sewer lines, although the easements are owned by the county, those need to be conveyed to MSD. And MSD has asked that the town join in that since theoretically we laid the lines, we own the pipes. And I have that for signature. And then the flip side of that is, of course, the water lines will be ours. And the easements, and although I don't think they're really conveying anything, because if I remember correctly, just about all the water lines went within the streets where we could, we could create encroaching permits for that. But nonetheless, the county has executed a conveyance to us of any interest they have in the easements where the water lines are.
Great, thank you.
And it's just cleanup to be approved.
Thank you. And I'd remind the public that this is part of the economic development process in North Carolina. Our county commissioners joined in, in, in on the same process. And the town of Black Mountain received a grant of, in the neighborhood of $800,000 from the Golden Leaf Foundation and another approximately $800,000 or $900,000. It's a one point.
1.5, 1.6.
Six million dollar project. Half of the funds from economic development and federal dollars and the other part from economic development in North Carolina, which is funded by the Golden Leaf, partly funded. But this is entirely funded by the Golden Leaf Foundation. So we've been very blessed to have this happen to us. It is, it gives us, in addition to the development, good development in that part of our community as far as the commercial, the commercial path down 70. It has allowed us to pump volumes, significant volumes from the Asheville Water System. And the Asheville Water System, just for the public's interest, the capacity is enormous. 40 million gallons a day and about half of that is utilized. So the good news for the town of Black Mountain is that this pump station really addresses our water capacity needs for the foreseeable future, for decades and for, you know, perhaps longer. So we're very, we're very blessed to have this, this, this happen to our community. And it'll be a good thing for the county. The Avotum building, the actual building, the business itself has been in the market for public offering and, of public offering on the stock exchanges. And that in itself creates a period where they, you know, they just really can't communicate that much. That together with the COVID pandemic, you know, slowed them down, but they will assure you that at some point in time, the leadership of the corporation assures that, that they will, assures the county and economic development that, that, that will occur at some juncture. And it, and I think it will because there is some implication to, to it on their part for, they have some responsibility on that end. So we'll look forward to that when that day comes. But all that to say that I would entertain a motion to approve the conveyance of the sewer lines and easements to MSD and authorize the mayor and town clerk to execute that conveyance and to approve and accept the conveyance of the water line easements from the county and direct the town attorney to record that conveyance in the office of the Register of Deeds for Buckham County.
So moved.
Thank you. And we'll start the voting on that.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Marins, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Thank you. And water connection tampering ordinance, Josh?
I'm going to turn this over to Attorney Snead.
This one came up now probably 46 weeks ago. The finance officer of the town wanted, said that we're having people tampering with the water system in various, various ways. And said that they had a note that we have the ability to impose a $500 fine. And I couldn't find the basis for that. And when I went looking, I found that our present ordinance says it shall be unlawful for any person to interfere with the hydrant plugs or sidewalk cutoffs. That's all it says. It said that from at least 1975, the earliest set of ordinances I had. So what I've done is I've drafted an ordinance that's before you today that spells out what tampering means and specifies that, sets out that civil penalty.
Right, thank you. Any questions for the town attorney?
Have we charged anyone that fine?
No. Actually, the town intends to start with warning notes, but they, they need to stick before they can send a warning.
Okay. If I can, I'll say this isn't that large of an issue. It's not something that's happening on a daily basis. But we do have your regular folks, that someone continues to do this monthly. And just, just, just for your, for your knowledge, when someone does this, typically in this situation, the meter is being broken, which means we have to purchase a new meter and install it. And those are usually around $100 a piece, just for the meter. So I, I don't think it's something we're going to be using a lot of, but I think if we've got that backbone, it'll help us out moving forward. And would you mind to just, for the public, quickly go over how you came to determine what tampering was defined as?
I dreamed it up. Actually, I, I thought of the things where people might interfere with the use of water and the meters and the connections. And I talked to Jamie about some of the things that happened. And what we tried to address are the people that run down and turn the water back on after the town's turned it off. The people literally will bypass it. The people who will get a single meter, use that meter, paying a single residential charge and connect it to three houses. And those seem to be the common occurrences that happen frequently enough to address. I tried to put all those in there. I suspect as soon as we adopt this, some creative person will come up with two more we have to come back and address. But those, that's how those are listed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the town attorney? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the proposed ordinance amendment as submitted.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt ordinance O-20-21 as presented.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? If not, you'd start the voting.
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Marins, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Very good, thank you. I believe we, we have no public hearings tonight and so.
Yeah, one more matter.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the old agenda. Forgive me. Go right ahead. This is a proposal release of the interest in an easement. Josh, is that you or Ron?
It's me.
Okay, forgive me.
Every time this Simpfield property comes around, it seems to be me. But to catch everybody up to date, if you hasn't enjoyed this for the last three or four years with us. Mary Simpfield, when she died, left her property in what I call the Sims property off of 70, running up toward the top of Miami Mountain. Left that to the actual Highland Conservancy on the condition that it be used as a town park. And the Conservancy's not in the business of running town parks, but we are. And so we worked through the process where the Conservancy could convey it to us and with the conditions, of course, be operated as a park. It's a, it's an odd-shaped piece of property. And the access is off of 70, under the interstate, the one-lane town, across a railroad track into the property. Mike Begley owns an easement that comes off of Sunset and enters into the property up on the northeast, or southeast side of that property, which is a safer access. And so he asked that if I give you guys that easement, can I have some of the property? Well, the answer was no. But there's a part of the property that we walked and is not particularly useful to the park, that the town could say, we just don't want that piece. And so the town in June of 2019 passed a resolution says, we say we don't need, we won't, we won't take, we don't want to take that part. And that went back to the estate, which the state was happy to have because they have some money to pay out. And, and some of the people who are going to get financial requests were not going to get them because Mary didn't have as much cash as she thought she'd have on hand when she died. And so you've got a map in your packet. The yellow shows what the town owns. The green, if it came out that color after I scanned it and copied it, that's the area that the town has renounced. And with, and the estate is now, we're finishing up negotiations to sell to Begley. You'll see a little rectangular end stuck up at the edge between the green and the yellow. That's an end of an easement that's on an old plat, about a hundred-year-old plat. It's roughly 25 to 30 feet wide. It's kind of hard to tell the scale on those old plats. And it's probably 1,000 feet long. And the last five, six, 700 feet of it, it's not in use. There's no road there. And if we owned that, that we couldn't just walk away from it. We would have to get a price for it and put up for upset bid. But we don't own it. It's just an interest that the town arguably in the future, if we opened a street, that would be our street. And rather than close it or doing any of that, what Begley wants obviously is the use of that little piece that's somewhere between 25 and 30 feet wide and 50 to 60 feet long. And we can give a non-warranty deed for something we don't own and we don't violate the statute. And if we give him a non-warranty deed, we convey him nothing. But his theory is, and I'm not vouching for this theory, you understand. His theory is if the town has disclaimed its interest in the underlying dirt, should it ever be closed, then he'd be able to utilize it for the rest of the property he's going to buy around it. And so this is based on his request that that little end, the town give a non-warranty deed. We don't claim to own it, but if we did, you can have it. He would use a theory, a legal theory down the road called feeding the stopple or required title to get the use of that property. And that's what he's asked and that's what's before you. I don't make a recommendation one way or the other. His interest in this arose after June of last year. What he really wanted was 10 or 20 feet on our side so that he could close it and the law would say he'd have all of it. And I told him that I would not come back to my board and ask them for another 10 or 20 feet. And we really can't. Now, it's ours. We have to go through that process and sell it. So that's the request and the motion, if the board approves, is to authorize the town to sign a non-warranty deed, claiming no ownership, no conveying, what interest they have to Michael Begley. I will tell you that I would sit on that until such time as he finished his arrangements with the, with the Simpfield estate. Because if he doesn't purchase the rest of it, we're not, there's no need to turn that loose.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions for the town attorney about that? So you understand what you're voting on? Good. So entertain a motion to grant a non-warranty deed to Michael Begley as described by the town attorney?
Was one of the options to just table it and wait until Mr. Begley?
Well, this, this plays that his negotiations with the city, I mean with the estate. And if you pass the resolution, like I said, I wouldn't act on that immediately until it's like come through. But it would be authorized if he makes the rest of the deal. I'm not asking to be tabled, but asking if you, if the board's willing to do it, that we have the resolution to do that so that when any of you works it out with the Simpfield estate, we can do it. It's of particular interest to us. Although we're not getting cash for it, that access over Sunset Drive is a, it would be a nice access point to have into this area. And the whole deal could fall apart and the Simpfield estate or the state still end up owning the green section and Begley never buy. But I think they're pretty close.
Any further questions for the town attorney? Anyone care to make a motion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, while much like the town attorney has described, while I'm not 100% sure as, as to the method that Mr. Begley is pursuing here, in order to preserve this, this deal as is and to move it forward, I would make a motion to approve the item as presented tonight.
Very good, thank you. Any, any further questions, comments, discussion? If not, we'll vote then. Alderman Stone?
If, if I may, before you do that, say what I've said, just for clarity. Would Mr. Stone like to add to that? That conveyance per only if Mr. Begley purchases from the Simpfield estate?
Thank you very, thank you, Ron.
Excellent. So the motion as amended.
I would amend that, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is amended only if Mr. Begley purchases.
The, the property he proposes to purchase from the Simpfield estate.
Very good. Savannah, you got sufficient notes on that to get that in the minutes? All right. So does everybody understand the motion is amended?
Yes.
Alderman Stone?
Ryan Stone, aye.
Archie Patilla, aye.
Tim Marins, aye.
Doug Hay, aye.
Pam King, aye.
Great, thank you. No public hearings? And any communication, Ron?
I have no new communications tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Josh?
All right, I've got a few updates. I think there's been some interest in at least some COVID-19 updates, so I'll give you a little bit of that. Just as far as building, you know, town-wide and buildings, you know, at this point, we are still, still not open to the public. Should they need to come in for some reason, we do schedule special appointments with folks. I think we've been getting along actually a lot better than I thought we would with not having folks in, but it's worked out good. Everybody has their temperature taken every morning when you come into work. We do clean throughout the day in every building. If someone were to have COVID, then of course we address that. And I think we've only.
And I think we've only had two instances of that with town employees thus far. We've had two cases. As far as recreation goes, we are following the guidelines from DHHS from North Carolina. Specifically, they provided some guidance to our recreation department on December 8th, which was last week. And I think we are on the verge of doing some indoor soccer. And let me just read a little bit on what we're doing for those participants. Temperature checks for players, coaches, and staff before anyone is allowed to dissipate in practice or games. Players must bring their own water bottles labeled, so there's no sharing or mix-up. Parents and spectators are required to wear masks at practice and games. Coaches are required to wear a mask. One parent or guardian per child on game days in order to stay under capacity. Capacity is 60 people at this time. Let's see. Players are required to wear a mask while playing and on the sideline. Everyone must adhere to social distancing guidelines. Referees are required to wear a mask at all times. Teams will not huddle before or after games, no shaking hands, no high-fives, no fist bumps, no heading the ball in any age group. Siblings will not be able to attend practice or games unless they are on the team. There's a 30-minute break between games, and this allows us time to clear the area and wipe down touchable surfaces. Regal Arena is fogged each day before the start of the practices and games with a sanitizing mist, so we bought some sanitizing sprayers that we use. Hand sanitizer stations are set up at the entrances and exits of the arena. Those are what we're hitting for the youth soccer. I'd say, I think at this point, at my last conversation with Josh Henderson, we've got over 30 folks that are interested in playing indoor soccer. So it is something that folks are interested in doing. What we're trying to do is provide that service safely for folks. We're also doing, we've got some more, let's see, we did a fall use disc golf league, somewhat similar, but that's outside. Circle of Lights, of course, we did. That was much different than it was in the past. And we're doing something called Cabin Fever Defeater Series. So we'll be using the same measures that we mentioned. Obviously, it'll be a little different than soccer because you won't have as many folks, but we'll still be doing the sanitation, the masks, all that stuff, temperature checks. So I think, you know, we're doing, I feel like we're doing a really good job with following our COVID guidelines and still trying to provide that service for our citizens that need it or want it.
Josh, I have a question about that.
Sure.
How's that appropriate, huh? For the indoor soccer in particular, but really for any recreation, do we have any sort of policy in place or procedure? If a team member does test positive, or a parent or a coach tests as positive, what happens after that?
While they were playing or afterwards?
Well, you know, say you had a game today, and tomorrow the coach tests positive.
We would be doing contact tracing.
Okay.
Yep, that's what we, and then we probably would end up shutting the season and doing refunds if we needed to. But yeah, anything like that, we'll take very seriously.
Okay, so, all right, great. So everyone would be contacted, everyone would be...
If someone tests positive, and as long as we're made aware of that, of course, then yes, we would be contacting folks to let them know there was a positive case.
Can we have something that requires them to, you know, to notify you of any positive test results or anything like that?
I'm going to look at our town attorney, probably, but I don't know if that...
That's a good point.
Do we have part of the policy when they sign up? Could you have that sign up sheet?
We could.
In the event you contract or anybody, you contact was contracted, you would notify the town?
We sure could.
Good point.
Into that as well, Josh, you know, that they agree to adhere to the protocols as established, to sanitize or wear masks, socially distance.
Good point.
Josh, when you have a game or anything like that, are they required to sign in so you know exactly who's there that day?
I don't know the answer to that, but that's something we can surely do if that's what the board wishes us to do. And Henderson, Josh Henderson, excuse me, may already be doing that for this.
So Josh, just so I'm clear, that building, current, under the current guidelines, can have 60 people inside?
That's correct.
And we're following that. I'm just kind of saying things out loud so we all understand, the public too. If the rules, the guidelines changed next week, we immediately, the town immediately complies with any new procedures and guidelines?
As soon as those executive orders take place, yes.
Gotcha, okay. I appreciate that clarification. I think it's just real important that our town show the leadership around this, and I know you are. I'm not saying, I'm not being critical, I'm just grateful that we are doing that.
Sure, we can do that.
I think, and you'd like to correct me, Josh, technically how it works is the county, we have to concur. The mayor has to concur. If it's ever anything, if I ever decide that we can't concur, I'd call a special board meeting. We need to be on the same page and so forth. I wouldn't foresee that, and hopefully we're moving toward an alleviation of this terrible thing anyway. But we still have several months to go. So, but I believe that's, I believe that's how it comes down.
So...
And so if I ever felt like I needed and I couldn't, I had issues and couldn't concur with the county leadership, because a couple of times, the county leadership has veered from the governor's leadership. And so it creates, you know, it creates a little bit of a situation, but I think it's important that the board is all, we're all on the same page. And so I'll look to the board if I have any issues with following any of the orders that come our way.
So on December 8th, when the governor issued some new orders, it was between a board meeting, so that's when the mayor would step up and decide...
Well, actually, the mayor does it anyway. I'm just saying, I'll look to you all. If I can't concur with the orders coming down, or I feel I have issues with it, we'll call a special call board meeting and address it so that we can be on the same page. And I will concur, you know, I can't imagine a situation where I would not concur with the majority of the board members on issues of this nature. But technically, it's the mayor's call, I believe, as I understand it.
That's correct. Where our ordinance is. Okay. So just, I'm sorry to jump back here, but so Josh Henderson just texted, so any positive test ends the season, period. And we have, we do have in place about them signing over liabilities, and so if they, if they come into contact with it, they will notify us.
They've affirmed that they're doing that. That's good.
Any more questions on COVID-19 right now?
Just, are those, do you know, are those regulations, are those rules posted anywhere for the public to see? I know there's been a lot of questions.
They're on our website.
They are, okay.
They are.
Josh, just one more thing. With the governor's new order that went into effect Friday, have we had any response from, you know, from police or public or fire as to any additional issues that's causing them as far as trying to enforce or...
I have not heard anything. If we've had any, they've been pretty straightforward, and people have complied.
Okay.
But to my knowledge...
I think most people are doing the right thing in this situation. But, you know, certainly those guys are certainly at the highest of risk, being out, just the nature of their professions, but just, you know, anything we can do to improve their safety, I think we're all trying to think what that could be and will proactively work towards it.
Sure. All right, let's see. I just want to update you real quick on some outstanding projects. Our Lake Tomahawk Four Bay project that we've been working on, that's finishing up this week, so that work should be complete this week. I'm doing a walkthrough of them on Thursday. Our Cherry Street pedestrian bumpouts, that, we've obtained our encroachments from DOT, and we will start that after the holidays. So hopefully around the first week in January, weather permitting, we'll get that going. Our NC-9 sidewalk project, we did obtain encroachments from DOT. The design, speaking with Jesse today, the design is finishing up now. We'll work with Ron on easements, and construction tend to be April of next year, so about four months out. And that would be for the section of sidewalks that runs really from Jane Jacobs Road up past, not quite to Long Vista, almost. The Eagle Scout project at Lake Tomahawk with that playground was completed. I don't know if you've seen that, but I've got nothing but great comments about that. I think that thing was done well. The Eagle Scout, Noah is his first name, he raised all that money himself, and they did all that, and I think they did a great job with it. So that now provides accessibility for folks that are handicapped to play with their kids. So I think it's a great, great project. Our Part F money, which is our Parks and Recreational Trust fund grant, we received a couple of years ago. We are finishing that up now. The only thing we have left are the bathrooms and the fishing pier. So we're hopeful that we'll get that finished up this spring. We are right now in the process of working on some easements to run that sewer out to Blue Ridge Road to get access to those bathrooms.
Excuse me, Josh, I think it might be a good idea, the Eagle Scout who, you know, raised the money and did this for the town, if we could get something in the minutes of our January meeting, and perhaps we can have a little resolution for them, but that would be, I think, appropriate.
All right, and lastly, on this list, our infamous Riverwalk Greenway, we are currently working with our engineer to look at all alternatives for costs. So that will be forthcoming, hopefully. I'll try to give you updates monthly on that one, so we can keep moving.
Great, great, sounds good.
Two more, three more quick things, and I'm done. Revenues, we're looking really good in sales tax. We budgeted 15% less last year. We are right now $71,000 to the good. So we are beating that 15% by quite a bit, so we are happy with that. Trash for Christmas, we are going to be putting a couple of roll-off dumpsters down at Public Works off Terry Estates Drive in that big parking lot for excess trash recycling for the Christmas holidays, and that plan is to have that in place on the 23rd of December and have it there till the 30th of December for about a week. And lastly, town hall will be closed Christmas Eve, December 24th, and Christmas Day, the 25th, as well as New Year's Day, January 1st. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Anything from members of the board for the public?
I had something I wanted to give a shout out to all the election workers in the Buncombe County Board of Elections and the folks in our local precincts that work so hard, made our elections go off smoothly and efficiently, and it's a hard job, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate all their efforts. And the other thing I just wanted to add was, I just want to encourage the public, all of us, to stay safe during this holiday season. I know it's hard to, you know, Christmas and all the holidays, you want to be with everybody you love, but this might be a year to take it easy, and, you know, hope is on the horizon with the vaccines, so I would just encourage people to really be careful.
Anyone else?
I would just like to thank the board, and thank you, Mayor, and Josh, and my wife and my family, who I know would have loved to be here tonight, but most of all, the community. It's an honor to have this opportunity to serve the board, and it's an honor I don't take lightly, and the responsibility I don't take lightly, and I just really appreciate this this time. And I think we have a very wonderful, strong board, and I look forward to working with each of you to really make Black Mountain the gem, not just for Western North Carolina, but for, you know, the rest of the state and across the globe. So thank you.
Alderman Raines, anything tonight? Alderman Petilla?
Good tonight.
Last, Mayor.
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. One, I would like to ask the board their thoughts on a couple of inquiries I've received from groups asking to do a presentation before the board. One is from a professor at UNC Asheville that lives in Ridgecrest, Dan Pierce. He is working with a group to create a monument in Old Fort for railroad workers that lost their lives in building the tunnels to connect Black Mountain down to Old Fort and the rest of North Carolina. With the board's permission, I'd sure like to reach out to him about finding a date in the new year for them to come and present something to us. They are asking for a resolution of support from us. They're not seeking any kind of financial contribution, if that's fine with everybody.
Is that good for everybody?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
The other group is a group of students from Owen High School in the Sunrise Project, yes, that are advocating for certain climate change goals and economic opportunities associated with that. They have approached about asking to do a presentation before the board as well. And again, I would like to extend them that invite if that's something that you all would be amicable to.
Board?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last thing, Mr. Mayor, I think you said it quite well, perhaps calling a special scheduled meeting in the new year to discuss some of the issues that were talked about, certainly during the campaign, including the appointment process, the various charter issues and others. I think there is definitely a movement within the community that has invested a lot of time and would like to present their thoughts on that, and I would, I'd like us to try to get together as quickly as we can to try to schedule something so people can start letting us know their thoughts on that.
Sounds good. Maybe what we might do is ask the town clerk to poll the board and find a date that works. And is there a particular time, that time or day of the week that doesn't work? The board prefer either first thing in the morning, let's say 8:30, or 5 o'clock? Does it matter?
It does not matter to me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then, if you could help us out, just poll the board, and we're, it sounds like we're, we'll just make sure we're not doing, have a conflict with anyone, but it sounds like the dates and times, various dates and times could work.
And then lastly, I want to just congratulate and welcome Pam and Doug to the board, and congratulate Archie again on his election and being seated tonight. And I look forward to working with all of you. And the last thing is, just want to wish everyone happy holidays and Merry Christmas, and hope everyone stays safe, and I hope the same for everybody in town as well.
Thank you, thank you. And as far as I'm concerned, I just really, a hearty welcome to Pam and to Doug, Archie, happy to have you on for full term. And I want to reach out and thank and recognize our town employees had the opportunity just to offer a greeting in writing as our town employees gathered for what is usually a nice, big event with food and so forth, when we're all together and all the board can come, and even our volunteers and other volunteer board members and volunteers in the community are able to come. But of course, we can't do that this year. But we do appreciate our town employees. It's been a laborious year for them, as it has been for many others, but they have stepped up, and as always been the case, at least in my experience serving on the board, our employees are top-notch, and that's why we have a town that operates well, because our employees work well together and support them, and we really appreciate them. It's been a difficult year for many of them, many of us in our communities, both in loss of jobs and economic hardship and loss of lives. I'm sure many of us know someone personally, or maybe it's a loved one, but certainly we know those who have passed away from the COVID-19 virus. And it's with good hope as we go into this holiday season and as we start the new year that the vaccine is being distributed as we speak. And so it's a good matter of prayer for our community that this terrible thing can be alleviated and that we can move forward and do the things we were accustomed to doing nine months ago before we found out how severe and serious this pandemic is. And so to echo what Councilwoman King had to say, let's be safe, let's continue to practice the things that we know and that the health officials have told us work, wear a mask, and try to distance and try to hang in there for a while, and hopefully the vaccine will be available to us here in Black Mountain with our broader community in the coming months. And in the meantime, let's just try to be careful and try to set a good example to that where we go. And with that, not only to the board, town attorney, Savannah, and Josh, Fred, Gary, and all those who serve here in the town, we wish you just a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and thank you for all you do in the community, and to our citizens, Merry Christmas.
Absolutely.
If there's no objection, meeting adjourned. If there's no objection, meeting adjourned.